To the Tuesday, August sixth meeting of the Norton Planning Board. This is a remote only meeting. You can join online via the web link Zoom. In the meeting agenda, we can also view this on Norton Cable Access Channels fifteen and nineteen. In addition, feel free to email questions to town staff. Email listed on the agenda. Uh Paul, we don't have any planning board business and policies, bills and warrants or minutes, correct?
Uh, we, we do not.
So then right to. Voting on the draft decisions for the special permit modification and site plan modification for one oh eight South Worcester Street. Someone want to pull that up or does anybody have any changes or anything? I read it. I don't have any problem with it.
Uh, I'll pull it up right now. Um, and I want to apologize. I saw some. Copy edits and what I sent you so. Uh, but I did make those changes, but you should be seeing it now. For waiting river. Is that appearing? So there were just some copy edits. Um. You know, I pulled everything, most of the conditions right from the first two decisions. Um, but I added a couple of things, uh, uh, including making sure they have Board of Health approval for the septic system. And we're getting, uh, Water and Sewer Commission approval for extension of the water. Oh, wait, I'm, I'm maybe getting two things can, uh, the other one confused with it, but definitely the septic system here.
A water line signing off here too.
Oh, we, okay, right. Thank you.
Looping of the water line.
Right. And then, um. I just wanted to point out, and this will probably come up later during our MBTA discussion. You saw some conditions in here. About regulatory agreements and so forth for affordable housing. Uh, just bear those in mind when we start getting into the affordable housing section, because these are some of the provision, conditions that we put in. As you know, to ensure that developments are. Are affordable that, you know, anyway. Uh, so we've got the Board of Health and the Water and Sewer Commission. We pulled over a number of other things, including this condominium master deed. We had, uh, direction of construction traffic and telling them, you don't bring your trucks through neighborhoods. Um, take the quickest routes to get to the highway, uh, to the highways. These conditions come right out of Article nineteen. And. I think that was. Uh, and I added that a couple of conditions regarding the homeowners association that you wanted regarding. No vehicles being parked on the road that, and such that it blocks emergency vehicles and that they're responsible for maintaining the drainage system. And then the, this is just the record of the vote. And, uh, it. So Chair, just as far as your action on this, it's just to, uh, confirm. Whatever changes you ultimately want to see in this, the conditions.
Anybody else have any comments?
Oh, uh, I'm sorry. I just got a text from Jim reminding us that he was out. So don't think we'll be seeing him.
I have no further comment on the document.
Have we been voting on these, Paul? Do you want a motion and we can vote or?
Yes.
Chair would entertain a motion. Anybody wants to make one for approving these, this draft?
Uh, motion to approve the draft for with MSP two and site plan modification. Segment.
I'm sorry, who made, was that Steve that made the second?
There's no one else that.
It was me. My voice has gotten a little deeper. I'm sorry.
No, huh, just a little deffer.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll do a roll. Laura? Steve?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
I need that up tomorrow.
That adds up to seven. I think you're good.
Yep.
That's a good number then.
Moving on to the next decision, we have site plan SPR five and special permit SP nine for two ninety-nine South Washington Street.
Uh, I am pulling that up right now. Okay. So we also approved this one. Um. So let me just. Scroll down to. The conditions. Specific ones. Um. Let's begin here. They, they need to receive approval from Water and Sewer to extend town water to the site. These are all pretty standard, uh, post occupancy.
The only other one we had here was the, uh, waiver of the scale of the plan. That's it.
Oh, right. Yeah. Yep. Um. Yeah, this was. No, you, you voted on that. You voted on that already. So I, I didn't have any additional, you know, uh. You all didn't really have any other conditions in here. I started to make the, uh, protecting the site triangle a standard condition. So maintain vegetation, don't plow into it. But there really wasn't anything else that was. You know, that was particular. So we have just the same situation. Um. We're just looking to vote on the. You know, to vote on the, uh, the form of this agreement, I mean, the, uh, decision.
Motion to approve the conditions related to special permit number nine and site plan review number five as discussed in the meeting just now.
Seconded.
We have Laura with the motion and Eric with the second. Any other discussion? We'll go down Laura.
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Now vote yes.
Okay. Great. But so we are. Done with that.
Next up in the agenda, we have our proposed MBTA overlay district discussion. With our serpent representatives, this lovely law that the state is forcing down our throats.
Always a fun topic, right? Um, for the record, my name is Taylor Perez. I'm with Serpent. I'm joined by my colleague, Robert Cabral, uh, Aubrey and Chris. And some of you folks have already kind of been working with us as we've been drafting this bylaw. Um, we can go through it in detail depending on, you know, how familiar folks are with it, if they've had time to spend with it. But we can just kind of give a high level overview and then make some discussion and then have, you know, decisions made about certain setbacks, et cetera. And so I will share my screen in a moment. Uh, let me just get that going. Paul, will I be able to share my screen?
Yes, yes, you can.
I have the version up right now and I don't believe it has your comments, Paul, but.
That's okay. That's okay. I know Steve also made comments as well.
Yes. So let me share my screen. Can you folks see that? Excellent. I'll zoom a little bit too. So just as a kind of thirty thousand, you know, foot overview of this, we are writing a multifamily by right with site plan approval bylaw. We are looking at allowing mixed use in the district as well as well as duplexes. Um, we have written in a density bonus. We have a maximum of sixteen units per acre. We have an affordability component that will go into more detail and that Paul was alluding to earlier. And we've set a five thousand square foot minimum lot size to encourage subdivision and smaller housing typologies. Um, and then I can also show the district boundary that we have been examining and discuss that. Um, which is right here. So in orange right here, this is the current boundary that we've been looking at, kind of based on some previous discussion. It's a compromise between a larger boundary that we had also previously discussed and a much smaller one. Um, we have this PGA charities parcel. I believe both of these are. This is the ice cream facility, some small multifamily, and I believe this is a forty B. So this is what we're looking at right now. It's about just over a hundred acres in size, right on the Mansfield line next to the Xfinity Center. Um, we ran it through the compliance model with the information that we have in this bylaw and it's looking good. Um, I actually think you folks could consider downsizing if you wanted, but we can get into that later. But, um, did you folks want to walk through this in terms of structure? If you familiarize yourself enough, do we feel it's necessary? I kind of want to defer to you folks on what will work best.
Like, uh, one thing in terms of our schedule, which you recall when we last met, we, as you know, we're, we're on a pretty accelerated schedule. While we do have this meeting and next, your next meeting to, you know. Make your recommendation for the war, uh, you know, to add it to the warrant. Um, we really do need to settle on the parcels tonight. Because of the bylaw provision that says signs need to be in the ground three weeks before your first public hearing, which is September tenth. Meaning the signs need to be in the ground. Uh, I think next week, I, I've, well, anyway, I've got to look at that, but it's coming up. Before your la, your next meeting. So, uh. So we really do need to get the, at least the parcels figured out. For the noticing requirements.
Is there any, uh, provision or do we have to notify the landowners of any sort or should we just buy?
We, we do. Yeah, we, we do. And I have been meeting with some of them. I've met with TPC and with New England Ice Cream. Uh, I haven't met with the people across the way, but, uh, we'd have to get the notices out to them. But that's two weeks before the, before that public hearing in September. The challenge is the signs in the ground three weeks before.
One thing we, we did have a question about, um, that I know had been previously discussed is what. Warrant this will be on because I know that affected timeline and I didn't know if we had any sort of definitive decision on. That in terms of whether it was going to be a special or the annual.
There hasn't been a special called yet, so we have to be shooting for the annual. And, um, but I just, so I need to be clear, the signs need to be in the ground August twentieth. In order to be three weeks before the, uh, September tenth meeting.
So you have to order them tomorrow, is what you're saying?
No, no, we've got a little bit of time on that, but. A little bit. I'll be working on them tomorrow and coordinating with, uh, signs by tomorrow. But, you know, I need to put them, we need to put them out on all the properties that are being rezoned. And then the, we have to put a map on there showing where the rezoning is taking place.
Paul, did you talk to TPC about that lot that's south of Arnold Palmer Boulevard and whether they wanted that in there or not?
They're fine with keeping it. Uh, I've explained it to them. Uh, they're not, you know, I explained that. No, this doesn't make that compel them to do anything. But, uh, but they said fi, they're fine. They're fine with it.
But they had no strong feelings one way or the other?
No, no.
Okay, so if we were to. Drop it. It might be more palatable.
I'm okay with that too.
Cut it off right at the road.
So get the southern parcel for TPC, south of Arnold Palmer. Getting rid of that one.
I'm just anticipating, why did you, why is that in there when you didn't need it? Why is it bigger than it needs to be?
I'm fine with that. It's mostly wetlands anyways. It's.
Yeah, if TPC didn't have a strong preference, then, um, I'm favor probably dropping it.
Yeah, I'm good with that one.
Okay. Yeah, let's do that.
So we've noted that, um, we can remove the southern parcel. Is there any other changes to the district boundary configurations? That you would be interested in seeing? Because again, um. When we ran it through the compliance model with kind of the base dimensional standards that are in this bylaw, it was. You know, in terms of the capacities, you need to reach for the law very well over. Um, so again, just giving you folks the flexibility that there can be additional changes if you'd like to see them.
I'm comfortable with it as it is minus that parcel south of Arnold Palmer.
Yeah, everything else seems to make sense.
Are, are you all okay then with New England Ice Cream? I talked to them too. They were, they were marginal about it.
I, I would imagine we just. I think we would keep that in the district and if it goes to future development, great. It will be a long time before it changes.
Yeah. And if it ever does, it's got very good frontage.
Right. I would keep it in.
Understood. Um, okay, so we can revise this boundary, um, and rerun it again. I don't think it will change much of the numbers. You know, again, too much, it will change, but this is large enough that, you know, based on our preliminary, again, it should be, should be okay. Um, going back to the bylaw again, um. I know there was some purposes that Paul, you had added that I will make sure it gets incorporated here.
They, they were, they were goals out of the master plan for housing.
Right.
Earlier today, um, I just made some edits to wording for clarification purposes. Um, it, it just shows as a guest editor, I think. So that was me.
Thank you. No, I saw those. I was, I appreciated that. Um, so those are incorporated. That's great. Thank you so much. Um.
I did have other things that I thought we should probably discuss. Um, that I didn't feel, most of what I made was just. Changes for clarity in the wording, not material or substance within the wording. Um, but everything else I think we should probably talk about.
Okay. So I suppose, no, go ahead.
No, I don't know. Did you want to just kind of go through them?
Yeah, that's what I figured we could do is we can walk through each section. Um, if there's major edits, uh, you know, I'll make note of those and we can ensure that those are incorporated. And so I guess we'll just start with the purpose. It's, you know, really straightforward. Small paragraph here. Paul has some additional ones that I will make sure get in here. Um, again, just from the, the master plan. Beyond kind of some of those basic ones, is there anything else you'd like to see?
I had a question about amenities that. Promotes walkability. Do we mean within the town or within the parcel?
I would imagine. At least within. The area around it, but if it's not something we're feeling strongly about, given the nature, it can be.
One forty is not really that walkable.
Right.
Um, I was thinking maybe change that word with promotes community or something. A, a little bit more vague.
Sure. Promotes, sorry, I didn't catch the last one.
Community.
Easy. All right. I've got that there. Um. Trying to make sure there was something else there that I missed. Anything else regarding some of the kind of basic language here?
Should we change shopping for commercial?
Yes. And then additionally, Paul, did you have your version with these purposes? I can add them to this kind of working one. Um. Or at least we can just like discuss them just to ensure that everyone is feeling, I'm sure they're, they're fine.
Yeah. I, it just, I guess, yeah, for the recits we're talking about it. Again, these were, there's three of them that I just pulled from the master plan and. One is to encourage smaller housing typologies and build a range of market rate housing to meet the, uh, the needs. Of, sorry, this doesn't scroll all the way over. Meet the need, meet the demands of young families, seen, the senior population of first time home buyers. Provides more affordable income restricted housing and to encourage compact mixed use development at key locations.
The only thing I've changed here just, um, based on that initially is, I don't know if we want to mention first time home buyers, just given that it's rental and mixed use. Um. But if we want to just crib directly from the master plan, I think that's fine. Um, again, I just defer to you folks.
Paul, read the sentence again.
Uh, it's to encourage smaller housing typologies. And build a range of market rate housing to meet the demands of. Young families, the senior population and first time home buyers. And I think.
All included in the same line. I don't mind leaving it because it does, you know, um. Yeah, young families could be renters as well and so could senior populations.
Yeah, and Taylor, your issue was it might regarding first time home buyers, correct?
Yeah, I just didn't, again, just for the sake of describing the purpose of the district, given that it's. Large multifamily and mixed use, but I suppose again, there, there could be ownership opportunities in.
Yeah, they could be condoized.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I'll make sure I get those other two incorporated there. I don't want to, um. Make you have to say them seven times over, but, um, is there any other ones beyond the ones that we just said that we'd want to see here?
What about instead of home buyers, homeowners? Cause even sometimes if you're in a condo or apartment, you kind of feel like the owner. Even if you're not necessarily buying it. Even that won't match the master plan though, obviously.
Oh, it, it doesn't need to. I, I mean, the intent is what is needed.
I, I kind of like the word homeowner myself anyways. It's more pleasant.
Those are noted.
Um, do we want to talk about what we want to name this district or are we okay with what it is?
I just couldn't figure out a. A replacement for Avenue to make it mood. Nothing worked.
State mandated overlay district.
No. Or the Mansfield overlay district. Now we're going to put it in Mansfield.
I mean, could, we could go as, you know, Mansfield Ave, three A district. It. Definitely describes what it's for.
I think the more surgical it sounds, the less appealing it is.
You wanted mood, right?
Yeah, it should have a vibe to it. I mean, if, if anything, I mean, mixed use district is pretty simplified, but Mansfield Ave is, is good. It, it gives it a place. The only other thing more charming, I guess, would be Great Woods Overlay District.
But I think we should keep overlay district in there since this is an overlay.
Mm-hmm.
All of the Kenny constellation, it does smell so mod. Mod's good.
Mod.
Retro. A little retro.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with Mansfield Avenue. I, I could go with Great Woods. If, if that's, if that's, if we're planning on never moving this district anywhere else in town. Then naming it for the location seems appropriate. If we plan on putting this district somewhere else in the future. We probably don't want to call it the wrong place.
That means not calling it the Mansfield Ave overlay district either then.
Right, right. So it'd be just like the mixed use, this overlay district, mixed use overlay district. If it allows us to something more charming than that.
Yeah, but. So I, I, well, one thing I should mention, I have been reaching out to a handful of stakeholders. And one person did. Did not like the location and would actually prefer it to be, um, on Taunav around the Taunan line. Um, I explained our reasoning for it. Uh, this person's reasons was more about. We should, if we're going to get this, developers should pay to extend infrastructure to a site. I, I, I stated that, well, the reason we were, one of the reasons we were proposing it here was because we already have infrastructure. And this would be a positive for, you know, water and sewer revenues. So just, just bear that in mind. Um. But I, I, I'm fine with Mansfield Ave overlay. But I don't vote.
Yeah, where did the one forty parcels end up in terms of. Viability on the sighting plan that Serpent did.
I think we did, when Paul, Rob and I chatted about this, um, about like two weeks ago now, we did take a quick look. And, um, I can probably pull it up actually if it's helpful just to show, um.
Add it up forever and then I close it and I can't find it any longer now.
If I recall, there were some areas that were flashing as, um, highly suitable, but. I don't think it was nearly as substantial as some of the initial ones that we pointed out. Um, let me go down here and take a look. So going through all of this. Right. So these darkest green areas, we have the Mansfield Avenue area up here that we're considering now. And then I know we presented two other options being anywhere in Norton Center or along one twenty-three. There's some portions along Taunav that do flash. This area in particular came up as highly suitable. And then as you approach the Taun line, it's getting a little bit, um, less so. And I'm sure we could look back and figure out if it's water resources or any sort of other things that are kind of pulling development or at least. Suitability for development and any sort of zoning away from this. But again, this kind of key area is right around here.
Yeah.
They, they wanted it on the line.
Yeah.
Right. Mirroring some of the zoning down there too. Uh, there's some industrial zoning, but. Um.
As long as we can back up our decision, why, I'm fine.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring that to the group's attention. Cause it's probably going to come up during the public process.
And I, I do kind of wonder, like, the intention of this district is only to be this one spot or. In ten years from now, do we plan on zoning another thing? Do we make this an adaptable district? That we're going to use in the future for a part of our town planning in other locations. And, you know. I'm not sure if we will, but it's potential that somebody might request a, an overlay and bring it to town meeting. Um, so yeah, I don't, I don't know. It, it's a lot of debate about a name, but. If we, if we intend on making this an adaptable district, I, I suppose it needs an adaptable name. But I'm okay with, I mean, it can be renamed at some point in the future too.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it could just be as simple and un, un exciting as multifamily overlay district. I mean, cause I know we'd mentioned a, a mixed use, but.
I think that name sounds scarier than Great Woods, so.
Yeah. Um. I, I agree. I, I think.
Part of me, honestly, part of me is actually, I think Great Woods might be the best option because it's, you know. That there is a Great Woods, but isn't necessarily like, I mean, it, we, there is a limited in other, other places this would end up. And having a pleasant name to it like Great Woods, it kind of represents Norton anyways, probably the most digestible. Um, and reusable. So I, 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 I think Steve's idea of Great Woods is makes more sense.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I think just adding to it, when we were talking about the, the, um, the dimensional standards, we were really thinking about this area. I mean, if we're talking about 140 on the Taunton line, we probably would have different, um, dimensional standards. I mean, I, I would certainly have height. I think where we're proposing has a better opportunity for height, you know, taller, a taller building than down there.
Right. This, I mean, honestly, if it comes down to it, what, you know, 10, 20 years in the future, we'll make another overlay.
Right, right, right.
That's what the specs are at that point. So I, I, I said, I think this is fine. I think this is a good name that's easy to describe, but also does give a location. So I think it's the best of all worlds.
I like it.
Confirming Great Woods, feeling good about that?
I feel good about that.
Just to give you guys, um, some background too, as to why some of those areas were flashing, um, when we did our initial suitability analysis, looking at natural spaces, so core habitats, critical natural landscapes, uh, climates of flood zones, wet, wetlands, et cetera, and then water resources, all of these areas kind of along 140, um, particularly again, kind of approaching the Taunton line, we're flashing as unsuitable. So just again, to give you folks the kind of context as to why that was the case.
Well, this whole district will fall in what is already a commercial district as opposed to being placed somewhere residential also.
Right. Okay. So name change, acknowledge some of these purposes. Are we feeling good about these to move on? Um, this is just legalese, this is the establishment. Um, in the past, we've also had certain sentences that incorporate, um, that the overlay only applies to, you know, portions of a parcel that fall within the district. This really came up where we had the instance of split parcels. I don't think that's an issue here, um, unless for some reason you folks decided you only wanted to zone a portion of that large parcel, but if that's not the case, I think it's fine. Um, any, no questions on that? That's all fine. Okay. Definitions, we reference MGL and then your section in your zoning bylaw that has additional definitions. Um, otherwise these are all just pretty standard, just to again, give everyone an idea of what's going on. Paul, I know that you had noted that working with your consultant that they might consolidate these. So again, I, I don't know if we want to include a definition section specifically for, I mean, I imagine we'll have to because I think the proposed edits and
Yeah.
work that you're doing is coming up in spring.
Yeah, I think it would just be simpler putting it here. I just wanted you to, you know, note that, uh, Mark Bobrovsky is working with us to recodify.
Right.
So he knows it and he knows it too. So, um, he knows this is coming. So he'll take this, whatever gets adopted and then just, I don't know that much will change because he is, well, he's organizing it in such a way that things like this are staying together and not being put in five different parts of the bylaw. But he, I think he. Definitely, yeah, exactly. But it doesn't, it's easy enough. He can see it and then he can modify it.
Okay. Great. Um, as we kind of walk through and as you folks take a closer look at this, you know, today or after the fact, um, if you see anything that's not clear in terms of definitions throughout the bylaw, please flag it to us and we can ensure to define it here, um, or check and see if it's defined elsewhere in the initial definition throughout the zoning bylaw. Uh, you know, basics here, this undergoes site plan approval, um, permitted uses. This is again, I think something we can discuss. We had talked about potentially if you folks wanted to allow uses like duplexes or things like that in here. Um, and then, you know, obviously multifamily dwellings excluding cluster development is defined in the zoning, top of the shop housing is defined in the zoning and then what uses you wanted to include eligible for ground floor commercial development in a top of the shop development.
Well, I know you all were bringing up some good points about community space. I mean, I mean, unless we clearly define what that means.
Rob, did you want to speak to that a bit?
Or active community space? Actually, I think even Rob did in the comments.
Yeah, along the lines of what Laura's talking about, we just totally try to be cognizant of people who might try to do something that really doesn't meet the spirit of uh, an active ground floor and then try, especially if we're offering a density bonus that they would claim something to be a community space that really does not offer any value and they get an extra floor out of it or something like that versus what this district's really trying to achieve. So, uh, again, I just try to fly those things as we look through it.
Would, we want to include entertainment?
I actually had under the artist studio, one of my suggestions was the Black Box Theater. It should fall within the left center equal to 5,000 square feet, calories too.
It's a great one.
Did we have any kind of clarifying thoughts on community space? Um.
I mean, one thought I had was if, if you could, if space is for nonprofits.
I mean, would that community space be like, uh, oh, I don't know what's going, what they do in Abington, farmer's market type area and stuff like that? Is that what we're thinking about? So.
Yeah, meeting rooms, like places where, you know, people could hold meetings. Uh, movie night. Something, something that's actively used and isn't just the, the best of your, of the building.
We can definitely take a look at that too.
Another thing, do, do we want to limit commercial use to only the ground floor or can it be a, a multi-story commercial podium?
I think what we're doing, ground floor makes sense. But it's just my opinion. I mean, I can be persuaded otherwise, but I, my, my vision was always ground floor.
If somebody wanted to put offices up on one of the upper levels or rent, you know, let's say, you know, we're building four stories and the fourth story is somebody runs a business out of it, but you know, a non-public facing type of business? I have no issue with that.
Well, cause we, we're considering going up six stories. So the, you know, that's a significant amount of floors. Uh, I, I drew a diagram and sent it over to Paul. I don't know, I don't think anybody's seen it yet. Of just what it says in our thing, because we have six stories. So I just drew six story buildings and what it would look like. And yeah, like I know the whole thing isn't supposed to be commercial. We want multifamily on top, but I do know a lot of buildings do two or three stories where they do have commercial space. It seems like a lot of revenue we could get off, out of that space too.
Regionally, I can comment from what, what we tend to see. Well, I think it is a viable option, um, but I, I don't know what, what you noticed, uh, on the board and, and Paul, when you talk to developers, but we unfortunately don't see a huge market for mixed use and commercial space in the Serpent region at this moment in time, not to say it can't change. Uh, and I'm not sure if that even needs to influence what's allowed, but, um, I think it sets the stakes a little bit that it, I think it's likely that we would probably only realize development on the first floor of this in, you know, this juncture in time. Again, sometimes these bylaws are looking at a very long horizon and I can't predict and none of us can, you know, in 40 years, what, what might be tolerable.
Wha- what happens to the modeling? If we made non-residential an option?
As long as, this is our understanding from conversations, Rob, please jump in and correct me from wrong, or your understanding is different. As long as multifamily residential is allowed by right alongside other uses you choose to permit, that's fine. We, we model on, in the compliance model, under the scenario that the district is built out as multifamily residential. But it's okay to have side by side other by right uses again, as long as there's just no owner's restrictions on multifamily and that it's by right.
Yep, that's my understanding as well. It's like the, uh, the and residential is the important part.
Right.
So we might only realize first floor commercial, but I don't necessarily see a reason we wouldn't want to permit another level of dual commercial if somebody did desire it. Maybe the whole district is built out with first floor commercial and somebody wants to go up another level.
I think I, I don't mind it, but I think I would like to restrict it to office.
That's what I was going to ask is if you wanted to define.
Not retail.
Just have another line under any floor and then have
Right.
office space essentially.
And not to overcomplicate this to, to try to find a way that maybe meets what everyone's thinking about here. Um, you could be restrictive on other uses in a 3A district, like the important thing is to not be restrictive on multifamilies. So if it's something you want to look at on a case by case basis and grant the planning board more authority to decide what a second floor.
Yeah, I think this area is good for by right, but everything else could be special permit really. I mean, we can just, we, we can let, let the board decide after this. I think that, I thi- I think that makes sense. Cause we don't, because I don't, I, I would be afraid to be too restrictive or, or not restrictive enough. I'd rather, I'd rather have, have like, you know, us actually look at it to make those decisions.
Yeah, special permit, everything except for the multifamily. That makes sense.
But that whole box right there, the ground floor and the any floor.
Okay.
I think that would be by right and then anything else above and beyond, they can talk to us.
I see. Okay. So anything, so obviously, you know, multifamily, we know. Anything top of the shop that meets these basic ones by right, any additional ones by special permit? Okay, just to know.
That's kind of where we're heading.
Right.
That's reasonable.
Cause even if like, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say for, for when, um, the Warren article is produced, just to know, um, that any sort of special permit inclusion, again, this depends on how the Warren article is written. I'm sure you folks know this, like goes to a two thirds vote versus a simple majority. So the way we've seen it done in other communities is they will separate out certain aspects of each bylaw to be voted on. So you would vote on the multifamily portions and all of the, you know, mixed use by right portions as a simple majority. And then certain aspects of this bylaw would be voted on as a two thirds. So that's just something that we'll think about and have to kind of construct to ensure that we're kind of getting the best bang for our buck in terms of the voting thresholds.
Is this kind of going to just fall to what's permitted within the commercial district anyways? Cause this is an overlay?
Mm-hmm.
So there will be by right uses there and there will be special permit uses there.
Is there an existing definition for something like this? That you folks are aware of, or is this something we'd want to define? Cause I know right now we're leaning on the, the existing top of the shop housing definition.
I, I use podium development.
Okay.
And you can just write one, two or three story podium.
Right.
Like that, I haven't seen anything really beyond a three story when I've been looking, but.
We can try to pitch some ideas to, to Paul to, um, share with you guys too about, uh, if we want to talk about office and we want to incorporate some, some idea of a business, like the key would be, I think oftentimes like something by an appointment, just not general traffic to the second floor or whatever. It's usually what I've kind of seen on that. So like, it's an office, if it's an accountant, obviously someone's going to like visit that person's office to get their taxes done or whatever.
Lawyer.
Or line, yeah.
Mistues.
Okay. We will workshop this. Um, any other uses we want to address here? Either by right or special permit, now that we're including a special permit section?
Would you consider a bank a professional office?
I don't, I don't know.
The only other thing I could think of is, you know, a, a bank might be helpful under the line that says office, but I didn't know if it was professional office or not.
We have it separate in the uses table, I think as like a financial establishment.
We can, uh, cross-reference some of these because these are cribbed from, um, the Commonwealth's existing model bylaw when they talk about how to incorporate mixed use. Um, so what we can do is Rob and I will come through and, and streamline some of these phrases to ensure that they're kind of matching existing definitions. So we can, we can clarify that.
Yeah, even, uh, best of deal with an ATM.
I was going to say vending.
Yeah.
Any other ones?
Like suddenly the farmer's market, do we want to put like vendors? Is that a separate?
I would view that as renting out community space.
Okay.
Kind of a, you know.
A public market?
Craft fair type thing, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But more of like, yeah. Happening on a, uh, infrequent periodic basis.
Other ones? Um, I'm just making a note that this is special permit. Okay. We also just have a clause here about accessory uses for parking, surface parking, parking within a structure, et cetera. Um.
Taylor, can I ask you that last clause where it says our other building on the same lot as the principal use, is that related to parking or is that a separate accessory use? Meaning accessory building?
I would imagine an accessory building, like a structure or some, um.
Can, can we make that a B then? So that it doesn't look like it's part of parking?
Right. Yep.
I could see somebody just coming to us and saying. In this case, it would be them confusing it for just being for parking, but.
Right.
Honestly, it might be worth calling out to, uh, uh, the recodification because we kind of talked about this last time too. So it, it just might be worth just making sure, uh, he, uh, he sees that there too.
Any other uses before we move on to dimensions? So this, a lot of this is based on some of our initial discussion. Um, minimum lot size 5,000 square feet, initial maximum height of three stories with 35 feet. Building plus parking coverage for buildings with less than 10 units is 70%. Buildings and parking coverage for more than 10 units is 60. Minimum lot frontage 75 feet. And then I don't think we settled on setbacks. Paul, I think I know you had some thoughts on it. Um, and then, you know, obviously we have the adjacent to the residential use of 50 foot side yard setback. Um, and then a maximum units per acre for residential mixed use of 16.
Well, I put in some, some of my thoughts. I'll, I'll just throw them out here. Like, um, the minimum front yard setback, I, I offered up a range. Um, just giving, you know, one thing I want to prevent is buildings going way too far back off the, off the main road. And just borrowing what we did with Village Center Core, we said 10 to 40, but then I realized if we're talking 10 feet off of Mansfield Ave, that's probably a little close. Maybe we say, maybe 20 to 40 feet. Or 10 to 40. I, I don't really, you know, you know, 10 might be a little close, but I, I think having a range would be, it gives some flexibility and it prevents a building going way too far off the street.
I agree.
A minimum. I mean, why don't we just say 20?
I, I like the, the building's main close to the road. I kind of, that's how I imagine it. But.
Yeah, I, I, I just, you know, when I, I. I just, you know, when I I wrote it and then afterwards, I'm like, well, this is a little different than the Village Center Core, which we definitely wanna pull buildings up, but. I don't know that there's harm putting buildings closer on Mansfield, but I could see where people probably wanna be a little farther away from the street there, but. I'm all for flexibility too, this area gives us options to do. Uh a range of different development. As opposed to other most parts of town, which we have to be much more prescriptive.
I'm in favor of being less restrictive about putting a building closer to the road. I'm okay with letting them put it further back if they want to, I I I I care less about that, I guess, than restricting them from putting it close. But I see the idea, kinda force them to build close would be also like kind of create a vibe.
Oh, it sounds like we're okay with twenty for that number.
I'm cool with that, that's enough to park a car in front of.
Hmm.
So that would be the minimum?
Minimum.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm comfortable if somebody wants to put a maximum, that's, you know, even if it's a big maximum, like not more than a hundred feet back. No long drive with.
I I don't wanna take away from the imagination of the uh the applicant, I I I, you know. Well, we're we're gonna, we're gonna make him a sandbox, but I want him plenty of sand to play with once he's in there.
Awesome.
Uh twenty feet, side yard setback, minimum, do we wanna just do half of the fifty? Do we feel differently?
Twenty five, sounds good.
I mean, in other other districts, and I can't remember where I pulled the fifteen feet from, but um I think I was, oh, I think it was commercial. I think that was commercial was a fifteen foot. Setback and then the side yard for an accessory building is ten feet.
That's pretty common, yeah.
Yeah.
For a lot of town. I'd be fine with that, I I think keeping the buildings close together is a good is a good energy, I think it creates a lively neighborhood. So. Low minimums.
The ten feet.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Rear yard setback?
Uh well, it commercial, it's twenty and then the uh for accessory, it's ten.
I mean, if we're imagining the minimum lot size, imagine five thousand square feet, so it's seventy five feet wide, sixty six feet deep. We're already taking twenty feet off the front. How far do we wanna take off the back?
I'm good with ten, just.
Just ten is fine.
Yeah, okay.
Right. Is there anything else you would like us to address here that we're missing?
The.
I think we're good here.
Well, uh you had had. The standard. Um, hold on, let me go back, the uh. Uh where am I? Uh. Buildings adjacent to a residential use. Um, how do we, we had talked last time about. A a fifty foot buffer, is that? Is that reasonable or is that? That should it be something else?
I mean, honestly, it's the biggest, I don't know, it's the big, yeah, it's the biggest setback, and I think that would make the residents happier. Uh especially if, you know, there's trees and stuff getting in the way of the view of what what's being built, so I think. I wouldn't go any bigger, but I uh but I think I think fifty is a a fair number that'll kinda keep people. You know, s- s- seeing that we're trying to, you know, let let them have their house not being interrupted by like skyscrapers.
Something that I'm just gonna point out here that I was thinking about and kind of as I was rereading my comments is I think we will want to clarify here. That this is an existing, hey, I I thought we lost you.
I got, yeah, I kicked off somehow.
We haven't moved on.
So yeah, sorry, I I didn't catch any of the answer if you heard me what I said, so.
I don't think we caught any final feedback, it seemed like you cut off, uh we haven't moved on, but it's if, go for it.
Okay, yeah, the fifty feet, I was wondering, cuz if somebody has a house nearby, which there are a bunch of houses nearby. Or if some, does, is this just like a residential district or? Cuz it seems like it conflicts, if somebody builds a residence now, they have to be fifty feet away from it.
That's what I was just gonna bring up, actually, was that I think we'll have to clarify here that this is an existing. Because we're writing this again with the consideration of existing residential uses prior to any new ones, so I think there will need to be some clarification about. What that means and how we define it, I mean, I've seen in some bylaws, they define it based on a date um, you know, or. Again, we could, we can try and clarify that here to make sure that it only applies to uses.
We wanna set it as like a a a buffer around the district instead. As opposed to a restriction on every building that goes in there?
I'm trying to think of how that might look for the lots across. The street in the event that they were redeveloped.
Like, in in my mind, I'm actually kind of just okay with not having that in there. Because we already have restrictions about how close commercial uses can be near residences, like, so I I'm. It just seems like a weird thing to to work with, I I'm not sure.
I can see, I can see this invalidating. Some some of the lots on the on the other side of the road there, I can see where folks heads are on this um. I can't fully wrap my my mind around it right now, but like. It could it could potentially make a certain, if if a certain number of things happen and we don't run enough contingencies and it could make certain lots nonconforming, don't you think, Taylor?
Yeah, that was my thought as as I was kinda reading through this again, was because I I, you know, I know we we wrote this with the aspect again of just protecting. You know, existing communities and residential uses from, again, just like. Putting any sort of development, whether it be small or large, too close. That's why, I I mean, I I guess, again, I'm kind of spitballing and I would, I agree with you, Rob, that I'd wanna maybe spend a little bit more time thinking about it, it could either be addressed as. Setting some sort of threshold, whether it's date of existence or, you know, like, you're built, however we do it. Upon which qualifies it as an existing residential use and therefore that fifty foot one applies. Or.
Yeah, it it could be from the date of town meeting.
I was gonna say, just maybe as a placeholder, think about it, building adjacent to existing residential use as of annual town hall twenty twenty four.
Yeah.
That's, I think that's what we're trying to say, I just don't know if that's the best way to write it, but.
I mean.
Yeah, and and again, fifty feet, I know that's a, that's a big one, and I I get conflicted by this too because. These are residential uses. And, you know, why do you buffer and why do you? Separate like like uses, I mean, granted, this, these could be, could be more intensive, but.
Yeah.
Uh it's certainly more of a political expediency and.
That argument came up a lot when we had the other Mansfield project, right, where it was like the apartments. Uh and that that was the thing, that they were gonna be like three or four stories and that the residents around that did not want that, so. Or at least potentially have something that already kinda protect them there.
We have to consider that the 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 residents that this is abutting also are in the commercial district, they can also build three stories immediately, they could build a three story warehouse. Right today. So they are also allowed to grow. I. It does seem like it's just a tight restriction that we're working around, I I don't necessarily, I like the sentiment of it originally, but I'm not sure how it will apply.
And the other option, uh you know, uh would be to reduce that side yard setback. Maybe bigger than what we are already, that what we have for the minimum side yard, but something less than fifty.
I I like the reg, I I think the whole district should be built with a ten foot, like the ten foot side yard. I just, if we're gonna do a like a a buffer against the existing structures there, I think we should just call it like a a buffer a against the existing structures somehow. It, I don't think it's a rule that applies to all the buildings throughout, it's just gotta be on the edge of the district. If that makes, if if we can do that. But I mean, eh, the idea that someday maybe one of those buildings might wanna just grow and be part of this district also, I.
I think um for tonight, I I wanna give this some thought. Um and maybe to circle back on this, maybe the first thing we'll talk about next time, cuz. Yeah, I gotta think about this, cuz I mean, you might be right, maybe striking this whole thing out, mm, cuz we don't need it. But I I would have to give it some thought and uh look at, I gotta, I would have to review the current commercial restrictions to see if we're being overbearing here anyway.
Well, well, this was mirroring the commercial, which was about a fifty, which was a fifty foot. Yeah, I just.
Oh, then if if it's already mirroring, then we don't need it, so.
But the, but this is not a commercial use.
This is, wow.
This is under the overlay, so the the commercial standards won't apply.
So maybe I have. Maybe I have some wrong thinking, cuz the, in my head, like if it's apartment buildings or, you know, uh. Basically, if it's some sort of apartment that you're gonna rent out, to me in my head, that's, that's commercial, but I might be, I might be thinking wrong on that. Um, but uh, cuz that's, that's kinda was, it it's like you said, it's kinda how last time I had a similar. Discussion with the uh with the people in Norton, uh it sounded like they were treating it like, they were thinking of like. An apartment building, especially a large apartment building, a large apartment complex, they're seeing it as commercial. So um uh at least, at least when it's in their neighborhood, so uh that's, but I mean, if, uh, eh, I need more time to think about it.
It is technically commercial, it's next commercially.
Anything technically over three residences is commercial.
Built from a building perspective, but we view that uh in the zoning code as in the zoning bylaws, a residential use.
That's where it can get confusing.
Yeah.
So.
What is it?
I I think, I I think, I like, I think we should probably move on from here, uh just give us some serious thought. Um, I actually, like, what, how? I know we have another meeting, so I guess, but like, uh, when does this part have to be done, done? Like the uh the final draft?
Well, so your next meeting will be when you vote to transmit it.
Okay.
Uh which will be August twentieth, cuz then August twenty seventh, the warrant closes. And then it's a point in mid September where the the language cannot change, so. This really, on August twentieth, really needs to be ninety eight percent done. You can make minor changes at between the closing of it and the, and then when the warrant goes out for publication.
Okay, so really, why don't we have a decision on this by the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, that that gives us a little bit of time.
I'm leaning, I'm leaning towards striking it, that'd be my opinion if we.
Hon- honestly, it is.
Get rid of it, right, if we have to make a decision tonight, that's what I would just say, is get rid of it, but.
Actually, I mean, that's, why don't we just strike it then for now, and then if if we have a different argument, we can just bring it up next time.
And I think we should just make as many changes as, since Tim's not here, since the chairman's not here, might as well, we can play and.
Oh, good point. Perfect.
Rob, did you have any thoughts on that before we move on?
Just uh in terms of process, would would it be helpful to the board uh and Paul, if if we at Serp Head. Kinda look around at some other bylaws and see how they handle this kinda thing, maybe one option that that looks at. A numerical setback like this, one that I, you know, I heard your approach, Steve, that. We're really talking about that one large parcel on this, we we can check around, just to for simplicity sake, throw throw three ideas at you and we don't have to land any one of them, but just for context. If that's helpful.
If you want.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it, but I'm also okay with just being confident in our decision tonight.
Okay, we're we're here to help, you know, whatever facilitates.
Yeah.
For sure, if for somebody else by the next one, we can definitely.
Now, I think unless you guys see something crazy that no one's ever, you know, this is in every bylaw or, you know, that. We're kind of out of line by doing this, bring it back up again, other than that, let's stick with nothing.
Great, I think that's probably the simpler route um, so, okay, I've incorporated that. Um, just clarifying here, in this overlay district, lots may have more than one principal building, is this fine?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Um, we have some exceptions, again, this is kinda just like standard language that we've incorporated, doesn't, you know, height doesn't apply to chimneys, ventilators, et cetera, et cetera. Um, we also added a clause about renewable energy installations, um that the height and setbacks may be waived to accommodate things such as this. Um, and then obviously some kind of nuisance clauses and whatnot here. Uh and that, you know, these installations don't provide additional habitable space, is this fine?
I'm fine with it.
Anyone else feel strongly? I will also, um. You folks, if I recall correctly, do you have a solar bylaw? I have not skimmed.
Hmm.
Okay, um.
Ground mounted.
Okay, that's what I wanted to ensure, because if it's just for ground mounted, then this shouldn't be conflicting with anything um. Okay, and then just a clause here, this again, I I, this is kinda where we get into a lot of like caveats and whatnot, as to we want this to go under, you know, undergo legal peer review to ensure that we're writing things in a way that. You know, isn't circuitous, that people can't circumnavigate in any way, shape or form. Um, as we start to talk about density bonuses, but acknowledging here in the exceptions that. The planning board may waive the height restrictions defined here, should they meet the conditions described in the density bonuses section. And here's where we kinda get into the nitty gritty, and Steve, I know you had some edits to this, I did take a look at them um. I haven't fully digested them, but I know they came through and we can talk about that here, uh Laura, I know you incorporated some language here, I believe. But again, acknowledging, you know, the purpose of the section sets conditions for which we can, you know. Make certain waivers, providing, you know, for projects that provide additional community benefits amenities, et cetera, that otherwise wouldn't be provided. That folks can combine density bonuses unless otherwise stated, uh and that we set forth conditions here, and again, this will, you know, be. Wordsmithed by a lawyer um to make it nice and clean. But we discussed just some kind of basic density bonuses here about the percentage of overall gross square footage of the ground floor related to top of the shop. What this bonus is, which is an additional one story of height. Um, and then I know, I think, Steve, you had some kind of breaking down here of some of the percentages, cuz our second condition. Our second bonus was for the provision of additional affordable housing, where we start with fifteen to twenty. And we go to more than twenty, I think I saw that you had incorporated starting at twelve um. And so again, conditions here.
Okay, apologies. Um, should the. Should be the excluding common area, stairs, halls, elevators, vestagios.
I think so.
Okay.
We had kind of used, at least here, um, we worked a lot off of Mansfield's existing, uh or I I guess recently revised. TOD bylaw, which has incentive zoning uh provisions, and some of that was kind of worked into here, we can review that as well, and then um we'll take a look at some other ones. Again, just to ensure that this particular condition is very clear um. Okay. And then did we wanna talk about affordability thresholds?
Yeah, I. I uh sent over another thing to Paul, I'm not sure if anything went out or not um. Yeah, I did mention going down to twelve percent on the first threshold. Uh, ju- just due to the rounding up on uh how many units you have to put after ten percent, it doesn't really, you don't add another unit till after twelve.
Trying to find where I saved your. Comments, I know I saved.
I I have it, Taylor, if we we can share it if you want.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I assume everyone's seeing that. Okay, there's some everyone seeing that.
Should we start talking about it? I'm not sure with anybody, um. It was two different sort of expansions on our proposals, one is about how many. Ground floor or commercial stories in the podium, I did one, two and three. And then um with it with a bonus for each uh podium, and then I added a density bonus, the thirty percent on top of that. Just oh about the building size, cuz we added an extra floor. Uh well, two extra floors after the original three, but then we allow six, so there's kind of a missing floor on the full residential building.
I guess in terms of our end, um. I don't have any, I guess, immediate thoughts beyond just wanting to, I guess, from our perspective, and ensure that the language is clear, um. And that we we kinda cross check it, but again, I I kinda defer to you folks on what you. How many bonuses you'd like to go for and what what you envision.
So it it kinda lands on whether everybody feels comfortable with the idea of up to like a maximum of a three-story. Commercial use podium, and then three stories of multifamily above that. In in some combination, whether it's made between a one, two or three-story podium and some combination of affordable housing. But that no building itself would be able to go higher than six floors, regardless of the combination.
Let's just say density bonus A, B. Where they can have. Commercial on seventy-five percent. Are you anticipating commercial and residential being on the same floor then?
Yeah, I assume the seventy-five percent must be like exclude uh. Mechanical rooms and staff areas or something like like I said, I suppose it's just non-commercial but non-residential sort of. Like, I I think it says right there, like parking garage and stuff don't count, that might be within that twenty-five percent.
No, but I'm saying, are you expecting people to live on the same floor as commercial property?
I was not, I was envisioning this floors would be separated.
Okay, then what do you do with the rest of the the twenty-five percent of the other two floors?
I I don't know, if it, again, does that. Does the seventy-five percent dedicated to commercial use, and then there's twenty-five percent not commercial, does that have to be residential, or does that mean that like?
I think the initial twenty-five percent threshold that we wrote here, again, working kind of off of Mansfield as a model. They set that percentage, and I imagine it's to accommodate potential other. And and this might require some clarification. Commercial space, but I I I don't know if it's has to do specifically with the publicly available aspect of it, where you imagine that there's like. Office space on a portion of the floor, or when we talked about community space, um. And if we're feeling like it's not clear here, it might require us to go back and do some wordsmithing and add some additional definitions, but. That was kinda the basis upon which this was was started.
That I sort of imagine like a a big lobby doesn't count as the retail space. So maybe like a, like if there was, let's say like a a a two or three-story open atrium. In the middle of this retail space, I I don't know if that would necessarily count towards the percentage, I, and the percentages might have to be changed, I just. Made a graduated level, sort of dangle the carrot, but. In my mind, it. It it the twenty-five percent would be whatever the building developer wanted to put in, that is not. For commercial, but maybe staff rooms or something like that, that doesn't have anything to do with the retail area.
You've got fifty percent of the ground floor and the second story.
I but I mean, the wording might have to, I imagine fifty percent of, I mean, that could mean that one of. Yeah, I guess fifty percent of the of the the whole thing, I I'm not sure of that.
I'm not sure if we're off, if we're offering anything worthwhile, if there's, you don't necessarily wanna put apartments. On the same floor as commercial.
I think where I'm. On the top of the shop. I get it when we're talking about affordability, because you know, when you add more affordable units, you need to disperse, allow the. Developer to disperse the income. Uh Steve, can you explain a bit more, because I'm 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 not sure what the financials. Like when the case of affordable housing, you're giving more of an incentive financially for them. By building more, but where here is that? Or maybe I'm looking at this, looking at this wrong.
I don't see there being a practical use for there to be an incentive. For the top of the shop development, I think it it. I think if you wanted to restrict, let me put it this way, if you wanted to provide a density bonus. For increasing it on the ground floor only. I'll listen to that, but. Allowing commercial going up to the second and third floor where you've got potentially fifty to. Twenty-five, twenty-five to fifty percent that he's gonna come up with some other creative use for, that. From a practical standpoint, it won't be that working. But if you wanted to talk about increasing the. Density bonus by increasing the percentage strictly on the ground floor, I'll listen to that.
Okay, I mean, I I I hear you on that, I I I guess my only thing was. The idea of building more than one story of commercial use, eh? Whether or not the minimum goes up, like the fifty or seventy, it maybe it stays twenty-five percent for three stories. Well, if it doesn't increase that, does that seem?
But you've got seventy-five percent. If you're using all three floors for commercial, you're going to limit who is going to be attracted to the residential on those floors. It's gonna make them less desirable, people. People wanna live with other residents, they don't wanna live, you know, a bill, a business below is fine. But they wanna know their neighbors.
Right, but a- again, I wasn't originally imagining that the floors would be a combination, like they don't necessarily. I would imagine the three stories of commercial use. I imagine the other twenty-five percent wasn't gonna be residential, oh, that's that's, I wasn't interpreting that as. Being residential, I imagine that was lobby space and accessory space, that's not, like, I didn't picture that being apartments.
Yeah, but when you get to the second and third floor, you're very much limiting the developers. Use for the remaining portion of the floor that is not commercial. If you see what I'm saying.
I I guess so, but I I you know, I I don't know, I imagine if. How much of the floor, like a second of, if there was a second or or third commercial floor and it was office space? Would they want to make it?
That's a hundred percent office space, I have no issue with that. And I think that's sellable, more sellable.
Well, that that's not restricted, I didn't say it can't can't be more than seventy-five, it just says it has to be a minimum, so it would be a hundred, like that seems more normal, they would. Use a hundred percent of the space.
I'd rather than use it on the ground floor.
May I ask a question, um this is just kind of like something that I've been thinking about. Even when we're writing the initial density bonus for top of the shop, um. Now that we're considering the inclusion of special. Do we want to think about just changing the dimensional standards for some of these, you know, mixed use with second floor? Inclusions, do you know what I mean? So rather than trying to do like a density bonus for the provision, do we just wanna automatically say? You could go up to four stories or something like that, I I don't know if it simplifies it, or if it accomplishes what we're seeking to do. Um I'm just trying to kind of think of ways that could be, I guess, easier to interpret or easier to streamline, especially since that undergoes a special permit. Process based on how we've written it. But I don't know, I I again, I I defer to you folks.
I don't mind the idea of adding any restrictions on what uses can go on what floor, or to what degree that they need to be changed. I was just in the mindset of creating a way that we could allow three stories of commercial development in some form. That's all, if if parts of that need to be tweaked or whatever, that doesn't seem reasonable, but. To me, I don't, I don't necessarily see the idea that there wouldn't be any developer that wouldn't put three stories of commercial and then. There could be apartments above it, I don't necessarily think they have to be mixed together, but.
My preference would be to see a incentivization. To increase the percentage of commercial on the ground floor. You're gonna increase traffic to the area.
I don't know if it makes sense, but can you do, could we do ground floor commercial by right? Second, third, fourth floor, commercial use by special permit.
I would be happy with that as an option.
That's what I was wondering.
And again, I it it doesn't have to have the increase of a minimum, I just figure the more we require as a town, the more benefit it is to us. I but that, you know.
If you had the right kind of building, we, the whole front of the building, say, was commercial, and the whole back of the building was residential.
Right, that would be fine, I mean, I can see.
Even just one floor divided, the whole back of the floor or two is residential, you know, you have two or three floors, you say. Couple different combinations, at least special permit, we have a little bit more. Bite at it. I don't know how hard that is to write in. That's Taylor's job.
I think it would be clean to write it in that way, to be honest, because. The the concern with this, right, is is somebody subverting the intense.
Correct.
Bylaw, and so if you have control over that, obviously, everyone's gonna feel a little better, so.
That's what I thought of it when you said going around the bylaw.
And um if you want, I can actually go, I pulled up Mansfield's um incentive zoning, they have a little bit. If you if you want, I can share it, just to kind of walk through some of the ways it seems that they've approached it and. What we think might make sense for us, and it doesn't, obviously, we're working off Mansfield here, it doesn't have to be. Just Mansfield, if we find some other good examples, but I just know this is a recent one that did pass town meeting, so it seems like a good place to start. Um and just also to clarify here, again, now that we have special permit portions of this bylaw, I don't know if we wanna. You know, all of their incentive zoning is special permit, um just something to consider, right now, I think we have it written as a part of the site planner approval process to receive a waiver. But if we wanna do it under special permit, we can.
I think the more we can put under special permit, the better we're doing.
Well, according to Mark Bobrowski, anything that requires a waiver is a special permit.
Do you have thoughts, Rob?
And then Taylor, just to to be clear on your, on the point you brought up too, we would just be separating that out as a two-thirds vote, so if we, is that? How you would feel about that too?
Right.
And so if we game, if we game out the town vote on that, you know, it's it's conceivable that folks reject that portion of it, you know, the thing passes by fifty-five percent. Or whatever, both of them, let's say, so that would just ultimately mean that you get the buy right, three stories maximum. But but the folks in town didn't like the idea of going up to six with a special permit, or or something, that's like one possible scenario, you know, from this that, that we could game out.
Right.
And I hate the idea of having to present this two different articles. I hate, like, I don't know, our town meeting, I can just see it being a problem.
It's a little bit arcane and confusing, I I understand.
At the very least, to have the special permit inclusion of um that we've already discussed, uh if I go back, sorry.
I I think we need to do it, I just say that's.
It's just a pain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
We can reference some other ways that folks have done it and um, you know, try and figure out the best way and 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 coordinate with your folks' town council, um.
What'd you say, Taylor, you're gonna present to the town meeting for us? Thank you, appreciate that.
I'll be there, no, um I I won't, I'm sorry.
You heard that, Paul, right? Thank you. She said she'd be there.
Don't approve those minutes, um well, so nonetheless, though, what, I think. Rob brought this up earlier about setbacks, we can do a similar thing here, where we'll do some workshopping, we can also look at some other. You know, incentive zoning um bylaws, and again, just to reference the way kind of Mansfield addressed it here, we don't have to go through this in detail, but. We have some kind of diagrams about the different ways that mixed use can be accommodated, but if this is feeling. Complex and it's just not necessary, we'd rather just make it a special permit and and go from there, we can also do that, um. You know, a lot of the other incentives that they have here are about actually providing streetscaping, et cetera, they have an affordability one. Um you know, there's a lot in here that if you folks were interested in any sort of other additional ones, it could be, could be examined, but for the purposes of this conversation. Um and just to kinda continue moving, we will. Kinda do some workshopping here on this first initial density bonus, thinking about, you know, the special permit permitted uses. And how that might change some of these dimensional standards, as long as that sounds good to you folks, and that can be reviewed at the next meeting. Okay, if that's a good compromise, um.
I like it.
Okay, for density bonuses related to affordability, this, I think, is a little bit more straightforward if we just wanna change the percentages. Per um.
Yeah, I don't mind changing that fifteen to a twelve, if that.
Sure.
If that makes sense to the developers.
And the twelve just fits the rounding up, I I it makes sense. You're gonna have to hit twelve percent anyways at ten percent.
Well, then would we? Why not eleven?
I think because that's where it rounds up, ele- eleven is still, I I think it just hits at the twelve is the next triggering mark for the next unit. When you're at sixteen, and then I think the next time it flips is at twenty-six units.
We can also just say over ten percent, but no less, or no greater than twenty or something like that. Something along the lines to accomplish that, I understand what we're trying to do here. And then, did we wanna set something between twenty and then have it over thirty? As we saw there?
Uh I I just put, like I said, I I put twelve, twenty and thirty. Because if they don't build a podium and they only have two floors, then they only have a five-story building and you're allowed six within the district or. Let's say one building with a podium wants to convert to all multifamily, then they have a floor that they technically can't. Use with, like, I don't know, it's a weird combination. It just gives an option for um a fully multifamily building to reach the six-story mark. And it's it's the next level is at thirty, and that matches the affordable housing.
I'm not sure about using the term podium anywhere either, podium is a term of. A construction style where you have steel in the bottom and wood construction on top, um is generally where that term's used, I'm not sure. If there's a better way to put it. Yeah, I would, I would get rid of podium.
Yeah.
On podium on the street if there's a parking garage under it or something.
Yeah. To me, the podium's just a construction style.
Okay, I'm fair with that, I'm fine with that, I I was just using it as like a.
I know what you're saying, I know exac- I I know exactly what you're saying, I'm just saying that the term podium comes from the the way it's built.
Yeah.
So in terms of, um.
Just leave it.
Just. Circling back here.
Do we want to add the thirty percent? Is that like to achieve the next floor? Or?
Not really maxed out already? If we're capping it at six stories?
No, because it's three stories and then two additional stories.
You got one, you get three by right, one additional for top of the shop and then two potential additional. For greater than twenty percent and that.
Laura, no, that um, top of the shop is separate. From it, so if you're getting.
You can combine it.
Right, but if you didn't, if you wanted just a multi-family. You would be limited to five. It's just a way to have a full multifamily at six or top of the shop at six, like.
I don't want a full six story multifamily. If somebody's building six stories, I want commercial on the bottom.
Given that, then do we want to just? For the possi- again, considering the possibility that we have a full multifamily residential applicant. Looking to apply density bonus B to go up to, I mean, this goes up to five. Is that where we want to cap it?
I'm okay if they go to six, if the bottom floor is all commercial.
But it's not. It's only twenty five percent commercial.
Hmm, and I I also was just thinking, I mean, in the event that we add a third condition of a greater affordability threshold than twenty percent. You know, as that would as assuming it add an additional. Story, and and like you're saying, therefore it goes up to six for an all multi-family. Residential development, so I'm just kind of gaming out if that. If that's not something we want to see, I wouldn't add.
That's not it. Yeah, the whole reason for the incentive bonuses, well. Yeah, I I'd like to incentivize more the commercial. So in that respect with Steve's idea, I'm okay with adding a. Bonus for increasing the amount of commercial. On the first floor.
Right, okay. Um, and we'll revise this section to again ensure that it's clear about what that increase looks like. Um. But again, I guess just coming back to. In the event that doesn't happen. We keep just two?
I don't know, I think we need somebody else's opinion. Laura's against it. I'm I was advocating for it, so. I I think all the equal, all the buildings being able to be built to equal size is appropriate.
Do you have any thoughts, Rob, at at least from our perspective about incorporating this?
Sounds like a statement of values to me. Well, like, we can provide to technical expertise on how to achieve it, but um, you know, it's. Sounds like a judgment call, what people want to see in town more to me than than the technical thing.
Right.
It also seems like i- if there was a five story multifamily building. They, then they would not convert to a commercial. Bottom floor probably because they're not going to achieve that bonus. They're not going to build on top of their five story building. Where if it was a six story building already, it could likely convert to a commercial bottom floor. Because the structure is already there.
I don't know if this is additional. Context that's helpful if we just, I'm gonna skip through some stuff just to go down to this affordability requirement. Just to clarify here, we have written this to only apply to mixed residential mixed use projects with more than. Ten units, just as a clarification, if that's helpful. Um. Acknowledging that the purposes, you know, for the purposes of this, the existing article is not applying here.
And I and I would just to to bring it back, and this is, you know, kind of reductive, but ultimately, we want to see. More subsidized housing if we offer the bonus, and I do agree, I think. You know, maybe this is a little bit of weak in Laura's point, but if we offer the. Uh, first floor commercial, you know, the idea is to incentivize that with with the second story, because I I do think, again, from from my. Perspective, what I've seen around the Serpent Region, it it can be tough to realize. That mixed use building, so offering the bonus and making that a clear bonus is. You know, is is a good one that that applies. To the mixed use, if that's what people really want to see in town, make make that clear and and require that first floor commercial like that, so. Again, it's just that threshold of how much trade off do you want for? Um, how much multifamily do you want to require to see a floor? I I think that's really what it boils down to.
Also have to think about what we can sell at town meeting, and when people start figuring out there could be a five and six story multifamily. We're gonna have issues.
They they might. Even even if it's a mixed use building, there there will be people who. Oppose that.
Didn't we have this conversation with the Village Center Corps?
We did at four stories.
Yeah, I'm remembering this exact conversation at some point.
It's a little different area, different context.
But similar.
Similar, but I would say this area has is a higher or more dense. Context than than Village Center Core, but I just want to make sure I'm clear, so. There really are three different bonuses we're talking about. One is if it's just a uh. Uh, top of the shop, no affordable. Then we have the affordable options, and then we have this third one. That it's the combination of the affordable plus. The uh, top of the shop, which that one would max out at the tallest at six stories.
Right, with the one that's written now.
Right, so just top of the shop itself is four stories, you could go up to five stories. Um, with affordable, but six gives you. I mean, to get to six, you'd need to do top of the shop. And then uh, the higher. Amount of affordable units.
Right.
To get to six, so that's a pretty high threshold. Um, there's a lot of public amenities that come out of that. But yeah, there'll be people who. Are gonna be concerned about it. Um, but we're, I think there's. There are just, there are public amenities as as trade offs for it.
I think that's the the theoretical formula, right, Paul? I agree that it's like, is it enough public benefit for the story you're offering? Does it achieve enough good for the district and for the town?
Well, if we're talking twenty to thirty percent affordable, that's a, that's a. That's a pretty high percentage.
It helps.
Yeah, I guess a- again, just kind of going back to acknowledge your point, Laura, that. Including that third potential density bonus opens up the door for. A six story exclusively multifamily residential development, and if that's just not something that we think is. Palatable, again, just acknowledging that that opportunity is possible here. If we do that.
I I I'm just saying, it's six stories or five stories, no matter what, but it's. Sixteen units per acre. It doesn't matter how many stories there are, there's a density. So regardless of whether it's five stories or six stories, it's the same number of people.
But I think the way, the the way that uh, Paul framed what we're trying to do would be would be more palatable. That, you know, ba- basically, if we can frame it so that's like, we're we're asking for things that will definitely help the town, like amenities or. You know, ge- getting us a buffer on our affordable housing is just easier and easier sell. Um, than than on as anything else, we 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 spoke about this project. Is, you know, trying to, it's, so I, no, I think Paul's framing is correct for for where we should be going in this section.
It's also sixteen units per acre by rights, so we're talking about waivers and density bonuses and things like that. Um. To my mind, we could potentially be adding on, um. Because because what we are required to do to bring it back for simplicity's sake for three A is sixteen. Fifteen effective units per acre, multifamily by right, all all this stuff is. Trying, trying to represent the town's values out, you know, via a three A districts, but it's not. The core of what we need to achieve um by the mandate, ju- just to kind of reframe that. Which is not to say we shouldn't do it, but just to say that that's sort of the parameters we're looking at here, and again, it kind of comes back to that. If we game it out. We have those by right things that'll get voted on, simple majority. And then this is possible that people like it and don't, but it wouldn't, if we if we if we do that confusing thing of separating them out, um. You you may still get your by right three A district with a simple majority, or or none, or both.
Would it be helpful? For folks to chew on this a bit longer and then we can discuss. Or folks can discuss at the next meeting and make a decision, just so again, not like, if we're feeling unsure. We can do some homework on our end if it's helpful. If we're comfortable with what's here, we can keep it. I just want to give folks options as to, you know, what they what they would like to do.
I do feel that that this comes down to to the to the board and Paul and your your thoughts on what works best for for the town. Um, you know, I I hear a a healthy debate going on here and. Again, to me, it's sort of a question of values more than like a lack of understanding of, you know, the technical side of it.
Right.
Yeah, I I. I I like the conversation and what I'm about to say, I can't say personally, I that I like what I'm going to say, but. I think six stories. People are gonna have a hard time approving that. And I I. I think where we're going with it is the right way to go. Um, I think the area would be, it would be a. It would be very compatible with it. But I I'm just concerned that. Six stories, it's now two stories higher than our most intensive zoning district.
What, how many? Sorry, Paul, sorry to interrupt. How many stories is that forty B?
That's what I was wondering.
I'm I'm blank, I'm blanking right now. I'm counting at least five in my head.
I think it's.
Four.
I think it's four stories?
I can't. I don't remember.
Of course, that's a big, that's a, that's a, the massing of that is pretty large.
And that's what, that's what I'm kind of picturing in my head, you know, how, what's, what's it?
Yeah, I don't think. Oh, okay.
Yeah, five.
Or five.
Yeah, I guess we waived the height for that. I don't remember, but that was a couple of years ago, but that's. But I did, I like the building, but I think that's what we're trying to prevent here.
We're probably, probably trying to prevent that so close to the road, so. Ominous on top of you, I think is what we don't want. Is that what you're trying to say?
Well, it's just a very, it's a large, for for Norton, a large building, particularly the depth of it.
Yes.
And I think the depth of it affects the the perception of the height. Because it's, it's just, it's just bigger.
The proximity to the street doesn't help either, because East Main Street looks perfectly fine. And they're all set further back. Well, not all of them, there's one that's pretty close to the road, but yeah.
Yeah, they. They just didn't have room because they're, you know, they have the reservoir behind them here, so. I I just, the massing is what I I I think the standards we do, we have a good job of trying to prevent that type of. Massing here, but. I'm just, I'm I'm not saying what we're proposing is bad, it's just, I think that's something we really have to factor is. How acceptable will this be to the public? And I just have concerns about that.
You mean just six stories in general, regardless of what's on the first floor?
Yeah, and I I oftentimes get overly cautious and that has uh taken me in some wrong directions in the past, so I'm not saying there's no way this isn't passing. I just think we better um, really be thinking through it, talk with some people about it, and then. Uh, you know, if we feel like it's the right thing to do, then we we, part of our outreach needs to be. These are trade offs. There's a lot of public amenities we would get out of this, a lot more affordable units, we would, we would require commercial space. Um, you know.
Maybe the three more voices at the next meeting will help also. Or potential. Three more opinions.
I'd be open to the idea of. Making the uh, affordable housing uh, bonus more restrictive, where like twenty percent to get one more story. Like, is the essential goal here that we want to get? A a commercial revenue and not an abundance of housing out of ratio? That's our goal, right? We want to, we want this to be profitable district for us, not a net negative.
Right, yes.
So the more we can promote commercial use. And the more we can kind of tease but hold back too much housing. The better, like, if we just took the the ten or twelve percent off and just bumped that right down, twenty percent to get that next floor.
I'm okay with that. I'm also okay if we want to talk about increasing the minimum requirement commercial on the first floor to get that bonus.
I was just thinking about that too, because you're you're right about it. The way I was thinking it stacked as maybe story, even if it's not, but. To entertain that, if it went the other way, it was like seventy five percent on the first floor, fifty percent if you do two stories, twenty five if you do three. That way we promote commercial upwards and they got more space to. Build out. That might be the mo- more appropriate scale.
So I I made a note about looking at increasing that threshold. Um. I just want to go back to the height conversation because I do, I I um. I agree with your initial feelings, Paul, about wanting to be. More precautious, especially. A- and Rob, please jump in and add anything if you feel it's, you know, necessary, but given. The kind of issues around. This topic to begin with, it's already going to be contentious and. You know, the viability of a passage at town meeting is only compounded by, again, what other. Contentious things are included in this beyond just the fact that, you know, the topic at hand that we're addressing. If that's the case, and we really do feel a concern about something like six stories, I mean, we could adjust. To try and at least mimic the maximum. Being that forty B, which is in the proximity and included in the district at. Five, which would require us to. Remove, um. At least, you know, again, kind of gaming out the possibility of options. If someone did top of the shop development. Meeting a certain threshold to get one additional floor, now up to four. We would probably only want to have one density bonus for affordability. For an additional floor to go up to five and and cap it there rather than setting. Incremental additional bonuses, and that could at least match the. Existing housing precedence there. It's a. It it could potentially be an easier argument for you folks.
It's an easy, yeah, it's it's definitely an easier argument because there's precedent for it already in the district.
Yeah, I like it.
I like it, Taylor, and then you think about like. If we set it at minimum of twenty, not that we have this, but that's the forty R.
Right.
District minimum. I know it's twenty five for a forty B. I don't want people confusing this with forty B, which I'm sure people will, and we probably need to come to think of it, put that in our. Put that in our uh outreach packet, that this is not forty B, but. I think if we're gonna give a bonus, they should be going a bit above the ten percent.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I want to make sure I'm careful, like.
And make the twenty five percent commercial.
I I definitely get, I I appreciate where Steve's going with this and. I think other circumstances, I would say we should do it that way, but here. You know, you know, still feeling bruises from town meetings passed. I think, yeah, I think if we set that twenty percent, it's gonna make it more. Palatable.
Uh, do you remember what Mansfield was for their height restriction?
I think Mansfield's is higher. Um, I get it, there's, there's an existing.
Downtown is really high.
Yeah, that's what it feels.
They're bigger than us.
Oh, absolutely. No, I was just trying to, trying to think, you know.
It's gotta be like six, seven stories for some of those.
It has, it has to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One thing to even point out, this is, we're kind of just like. Getting, not not super tangential, but I just want to remind folks, we uh, when we started looking at densities way back when. We used Mansfield's TOD, existing developments at. We used Mansfield's TOD existing developments as one of the. Examples here, and so, you know, this is Attleboro's one Wall Street, and so going back. It's in the higher end somewhere here. This is Mansfield's, this is right by their TOD, you know, there's. Vacancies still on their first floor commercial, just something to think about, you know.
Same thing in Walpole, Walpole has a similar development, a lot of vacancy on the first floor.
And this is, it looks like probably four to five stories, uh, with some underneath parking. But just something to consider, and this was built, I think, prior to. The updates to this, I know this was definitely built prior to the updates, the recent updates to their zoning. I could examine, I mean, again, just pulling their bylaw back up. So you've got a, they have two sub-districts, it looks like. A sixty foot for sub-district A and a forty-five for sub-district B. I don't know exactly what those sub-districts are. Um, but I know when we worked with them in previous times, they had some existing underdeveloped. Or underutilized properties that they had been looking at to zone, so there might be some considerations there. But circling back again, just giving the existing precedent of that five stories. If that's something that you folks agree on and we, we just prefer to write it that way with only two additional density bonus options up to five, we can incorporate that.
I'm very comfortable with that.
Me too.
So we'll clarify again, some of these top of the shop conditions. We will only keep this more than twenty percent threshold for affordability for an extra story. Again, clarifying that we can't go higher than five and. This may not be necessary. I know Paul and I talked about it. I've only written it in here to. Acknowledge if you folks ever wanted to add additional density bonuses, kind of per the conversation we've been having.
It's not bad to state just for the avoidance of doubt.
Right, okay. Parking. The way I had, I, I kind of realized after I had written this that, um, it wasn't actually. Fully acknowledging what I think you folks had initially desired, which was that one to three, depending on the bedroom, and I can definitely rewrite it. To be that, um, the way I only wrote it initially was just to conform with the, the off-street parking standards of your, your zoning, which. It was semi initial first pass seemed appropriate, but, um, again, I do want to give room to acknowledge that.
Yeah, and we, we had our dis- discussion on, on parking with Bobrovsky last week and. You know, at some point when we, we need to do another major update to the bylaw and especially parking, so. It just makes sense at this point to refer to it. But I would say for number two, I would do a way, I would. Delete the, uh, by fifteen percent in the first sentence and even the second sentence because. If, if by chance they, they had off, you know, they had shared parking, who cares if it's fifty percent or not or more or, you know. I think the goal is, is if they can, it's probably not going to be needed here in most of these parcels, but. It, why would we limit it to just fifteen percent? I mean, I'm not, I don't vote on this board, but I just want to throw that out there for the board's consideration.
I understand what you're saying, Paul. I mean, to, again, to, to bring it back to. The most germane aspect of it, right? I guess if you're living here, you need your parking spot, you need the right number of. Parking spots for your cars, but if you're visiting, that's where we can really get into a discussion about. How many people are going to whatever. Commercial establishment. And whether, you know, requiring X number of parking spots per table or square foot really, really meets, we've seen tons of examples in the commercial side, I guess I'm saying, but. It, it feels to me, back to the walkability question we started this with, we might want to be. More rote with the residential parking requirements to make sure people can park their car if they live here. Which is to say, we can be really flexible on the commercial side, to me, not fifteen, go above fifteen percent, but that's my two cents at least.
All right, I know it's getting late, but shouldn't we strike that whole last sentence?
Yeah, that's, we would, we would. Eliminate that whole sentence if we eliminate the fifteen percent.
So we're comfortable with keeping the parking standards referring. To the bylaw, just again, given that it's going to be revised, I want to confirm that.
Or do we want to go back? Because I, I missed it too in my review and I apologize, but I think what we talked about is one. Space per bedroom up to three, was that what we had decided during the working group?
Recall when I realized after the fact, but if that's something you folks are planning to address in the parking standards. I don't know if it's redundant to state it here and then it could be revised at a later time. To just now point to the newly revised parking standards, um, it's up to you folks how you'd like to kind of handle that.
I don't mind being redundant if we want to. But as a placeholder until we confirm where it needs to be placed, it's going to reflect in the bylaw anyway, I think, so. I don't know if anybody else is comfortable or has a suggestion. I don't mind having it written there.
Yeah, uh, ha- having the placeholder for now is going to get folded in with the rest of the stuff later, so. And, and it'll, it'll probably just be referral at that point, so I'm okay with that.
So we do want to. Keep it clear here and then update at a later point. Sorry if I misunderstood that, just ensuring.
Yeah, we'll update at a later point.
Okay, understood. I will make a note about that.
Oh, she's typing. If we go to electric vehicle charging stations. I'm not sure we have. The definitions greatly of a EV station, but technically. Anywhere where you could plug into a one-ten wall outlet is an electric vehicle charging station. Unless. Uh, uh, unless it's designated by Ambridge. So, I mean, you can plug into a regular wall outlet to charge your car. And that's, that, I, I don't, I'm not saying to change, I'm just bringing it as a point.
We could define it if that's.
I, I, I'm not, I don't want to, I, I, I spend too much time dealing with EVs on a daily basis, but. EVs, a charging station is anything from a wall outlet that can charge your car in four days. To a four-eighty volt, hundred amp outlet that can. Charge your car to eighty percent in twenty minutes. It's just a very. Very broad definition.
I don't think it would be difficult to set a kind of base definition if there isn't an existing one.
I don't, I don't, I don't think we have anything.
So why don't, I can look into that.
Yeah, I don't know if there's anything better.
And then, you know, again, at the time of that recodification, when reworking those definitions, that can always be incorporated. So we can at least look into something here that would make the most sense for clarity's sake. Bike parking, I know this is kind of something that we've been trying to think about. This is again, something that the model bylaw considers and something that we, you know. Would like to see, but I understand the location. Um, and then acknowledging, you know, we, right now it's written to have any multifamily project has one. Secure bicycle parking space for every five, but that can definitely change if we feel it's appropriate.
Go Laura, go ahead, please.
I, I just wanted to know what was meant by secure.
I imagine that.
It can't be moved. It's bolted down.
And again, if that's unclear as to what that means, that's another thing we can clarify.
What is one bicycle spot? Like, i- isn't like a bicycle rack made for like four or five bicycles anyway?
Yeah, yeah, it'd be like one spot on the rack would be my understanding.
That would be my understanding as well.
I just question the need for it with multifamily only. I, I, you know, I would just think people are going to bring their bikes into their housing. Guests might bring it to their housing, into the housing. I, I just don't. See a need for it with multifamily, but if it's mixed use and commercial, that's different.
If, if I shut up at somebody's house with my bicycle, I probably wouldn't bring it in their house.
I'd let you in. I might not let you in, Steve, but I'll let your bike in.
Not their big sto- big story apartment.
If we're, if we're forward thinking. From the good planning principle side of things. We always want to try to encourage greater amounts of. Pedestrian and biking and walking infrastructure, whether that's incentivized through. You know, making it easier for residents to own a bike and then hoping that the infrastructure comes later or vice versa. You know, that's kind of up for debate as to how you want to handle it, but, um. I mean, if it's something as simple as a bike rack, I'd like to imagine that's. A developer, but I would imagine it's probably not. A super heavy lift, but that again, might require some clarification to say. That, and the threshold might need to increase if we're still feeling like. One for every five is substantially overshooting what's realistic if it's one for every.
I think it's overshooting completely, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that we fall on our swords for this on multifamily, I just. Just in general, don't agree with the, with the principle of it, but.
I would think it, it should definitely be outside of a, a store or something more likely than the multifamily, but I would be fine with. Requiring it at all buildings in the, in the area.
Yeah, it's not going to kill a project, it won't kill a project.
I would go overboard with it. I would say like more than one for every. It's a bike rack. I, I, like I said, one bike rack's like five spots, so. Just make them put one bike rack, one, one spot for every unit. If it's, they need to put two bike racks next to their apartment, that covers ten units, like.
It, it takes up a lot of space though. You also don't want to, it's. It's definitely cumbersome, it definitely takes up space.
If we wanted to mimic, again, this is just for, for simplicity, I, I don't know that I have any direct reasoning behind it, but if we wanted to mimic. The EV where we have one for every twenty, I mean, again, it's just like, that's ratios of parking spaces to others, so I don't know if it says like apples to apples is. Bike parking to units, but.
I feel like, like three bike racks can fit in one car's space. I don't see how it's at all cumbersome, but it's, it's so minimal. That like, if, if it's units, there should, like, I, I would imagine half the people might want a bike. It, it would suck to have bike and then only, like, everybody's piled on one. One thing. It, it's just such a little thing to add. I, I can't imagine why it would be an issue for a project.
Oh, it, it, I doubt it would. I mean, again, this is one, if, if this is a requirement, let's put it in there.
And to be, it's not, to be clear. It definitely isn't, so it's, it's really at your folks' discretion if you think it's appropriate and if so, at what intensity.
Here in three, three paths forward here. One is, don't worry about the bikes, two is. The real place people would ride a bike is in a commercial context, so. Tether the bike requirement to commercial ground floor and three is. Do we just set what we think is the right number of residences, maybe fewer, maybe more, so th- those are the three paths on here for it.
I, I move the mind that more is better. Get, get bikes going around the district, people getting used to locking them up at different spots. Being able to move around with it. I ride my bike up there from the Grove, like to that area all the time. I, I, people will come and go. Definitely tied to commercial makes more sense, but I don't see why mixed use shouldn't have it available or. A multi-family shouldn't have it available outside. People will want a spot for their bikes, especially if they're in the higher stories.
I, I would be okay tying it just to commercial, to be honest, and keeping the fifteen number, because it's. Like, again, I want to, I, I want to give these, these people a sandbox if they think it's appropriate for their project to have. Bike racks, we should give it to them. To be honest, they probably won't see it for, for residential only. Because there's no real good place to go besides, you know, trying to cross a highway, so we probably would want a pedestrian bridge at some point to make that make sense. But no, I, I could see tying it to commercial, but not, not the, uh, not, not multifamily.
The thing with the commercials, we just got to select the number of bike spaces because there's no units to go by.
Right, or it'd have to rely on like the number of parking spaces in a similar way that EV does. Is that what we'd want to do?
We could look up best practices for, for something like that, what other three A's have done, if that's helpful.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
I mean, I could just strike this first sentence for now and we just have this initial one, like you said, mixed use and commercial shall have one for every fifteen parking spaces and then. If, if fifteen seems inappropriate in this context, we can change it.
Yeah, be my suggestion as well.
Would twelve be better? Because we have a thing in our bylaw that at twelve parking spaces, more than twelve it requires. Like the planning board and a review, it has to be marked out, under twelve it doesn't. I think twelve is when you have to put lines down.
If that makes sense for you folks, I don't see an issue with it.
I have no argument, so, sure.
Any other, other thoughts on bike parking? Okay, um, I know it's getting late, we'll do our best to kind of work through this and make it make sense. Some of these are ones we've written in based on your bylaw, some of them are from the model bylaw, similar to the way that EV and bike parking were. Et cetera, so lots of room to kind of grip signage, we've just referred to your article on signage. Um, this is a straightforward one from the model bylaw, just providing pedestrian amenities. Along sidewalks and in landscaped areas, um, it's in the model bylaw, so we deem it appropriate. Crosswalks are constructed to be ADA compliant, et cetera. I know you folks have a lighting bylaw, I actually haven't taken a look at it, Paul, you pointed me to this, um, I can revise this to ensure that it complies with this, but I imagine. Similar to just being like, this will comply with.
Yeah, just, I would just refer to. That article.
Uh, same thing with landscaping, complies with the landscaping bylaw, unless for some reason you folks feel otherwise, um. The utilities are placed underground, again, from the model bylaw, seems appropriate unless you folks feel otherwise or have any addition. Uh, additional language in the zoning you'd like us to reference. Paul, I know you actually fixed this here, it's not showing here because it's in a separate document, but this again, it's just, you know, I will incorporate your edits, it's just, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, ju- uh, just, I'm sorry, Taylor, my apologies. John Thomas, our conservation director, uh, I gave him this language and he revised it.
Make notes, make sure that ends up in here. Because I know I've seen it. Commercial uses on the first floor, maybe placed close to the street, obviously within the realm of the setback. Law, and this, and I'm going to kind of defer to Rob here if this is still appropriate, this kind of is crib from a previous bylaw that we've written, just to break up. Passades greater than one hundred feet. If this feels appropriate.
Gets into that question when we looked at that, the forty B building, you know. If, if it, if it's one large structure, you know, it, it tends to be more of like a. Thing you'd see in a larger city, but if you get big buildings, you, you definitely want to break them up architecturally, usually from. An urban design perspective. Architectural perspective, so it is really just an aesthetic thing, it shouldn't change much about. Program or the height or the scale of the building itself.
Same thing regarding fenestration. Not quite my area of expertise, but understanding that we want some breaking up in the. You know, mixed use and commercial side of things. Buffers and screening, I saw this borrowing from this section, thank you, I will make sure that gets incorporated. Um, again, acknowledging just exposed storage areas, et cetera. And then a waiver clause directly from the model bylaw, just, i- it's mostly in compli- like in acknowledgement of the compliance guidelines and. The, the section three A portion that certain aspects of these can be waived in interest of, you know. Project viability, again, particularly from the three A perspective. But. Beyond that, is there anything else you feel we're missing in these development standards? Things you'd like us to consider or change? We've already gone into the affordability requirements quite a bit, so, I mean, we'll just summarize here, acknowledging that affordability, you know, restrictions here. Deed restricted will qualify as local action units under the local initiative program with requirements defined in the code of Massachusetts regulations and the lip guidelines, et cetera. Will be eligible for inclusion on your subsidized housing inventory and then acknowledging, and again, here for the purposes of this bylaw, the requirements of article, I believe this is nineteen. Affordable housing shall not apply, which may result in the need for you folks to acknowledge a revision to article nineteen. If it is prescriptive and doesn't say something like, you know, not contradictory as elsewhere in the zoning, et cetera, et cetera. Just something to note. Again, applicability, acknowledging that this applies to projects, mixed use or residential with more than ten dwelling units, et cetera. And that folks can't circumnavigate these affordability requirements by phasing, et cetera. Um, you know, again, setting a ten percent threshold, not fewer than ten percent, and that we round upward. Um, relying on this definition of affordable housing units, you know, again, just to describe the area meeting. Um, relying on this definition of affordable housing units, you know, again, just to describe the area median income, describe the regulations and you know, HUD's requirements, et cetera. These are all just basic development standards, a lot of them are pretty, again, standard and also kind of, I, I did my best to harmonize between this and your existing article nineteen without being super redundant. Again, just acknowledging that we're saying it doesn't apply here, but what we say there is good, um, so we wanna say it here. So again, just, you know, can't concentrate the units, must disperse them, et cetera. You know, proportionally among size, et cetera, et cetera. Acknowledging local preference is a possibility. Um, and then acknowledging, you know, the need for an affirmative fair mark, uh, housing marketing plan. Um, this should say conformance. And then, Paul, we've kind of talked about this, this can change if it's still not accurate, but just in terms of enforcement that it's the building commissioner at this.
Yeah, and that's article nineteen, the building commissioner is responsible. But I, I, Taylor, I, I would just, uh, going back to your note up above about adding the income restrictions. I, I would say we should and also the, um, the, the, the limits on the resale.
Right.
That we can pull right from article nineteen, cause that's again, what we were showing in the, uh, when we started the meeting, uh, with that one project that has affordable units, that's our way of of ensuring that, you know, uh, projects remain affordable for people at income levels that are within the ranges established by the state.
Right.
Which there are gonna be people, there are people who are, uh, they, they do not like what the state has for income levels and what they can set for rents and, but, you know, we have no choice over that and that's gonna be another that may be something that comes up in our, in our conversations, but a couple people have said that.
That's HUD, right? That's not you folks.
No, we get lumped in with the, you know, sub area of Boston and yeah, fifteen hundred dollars a month is considered affordable.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, with that occurring at the federal level, that's kind of always what, we, we hear it too, we just.
Yeah.
It's without, it's out of, outside any of our jurisdiction. And I think that's kind of where we end, I mean, obviously, just some basic, again, legalese invalidity exemptions, et cetera, uh, for usable uses and that is the bylaw. In its current form. And we only spent just under two hours on it.
Well, I, I hope with the work that you guys have done today and then the few other, the couple other meetings, it's it's more of a pay me now than pay me later, that we, you've done, you know, the, the work upfront.
Can be modified at town meeting.
Yeah, having, having learned that painful lesson a few years ago, uh, hence, that's why we started doing working groups. Let's not repeat a a, a, a very bad outcome.
Before I stop sharing my screen, any lingering thoughts? Or feelings?
No, I mean, we only have like one or two really open points to discuss for next time, if I remember. Okay.
I got one question before we go. Doesn't been brought up yet, but, uh, occupied roof decks? Where if somebody wanted to provide rooftop access for like coming in, like looking at the sky or like that kind of thing. Um, that often counts as a, a full floor legally, if any of its components are taller than forty-eight inches, except for accesses. Um, do we need to provide some sort of provision? Where, like, let's say a five-story building provides rooftop access, that is legally a sixth floor?
You're still governed by your height restriction.
Okay, I'm, but that's sixty-five, is that sixty-five feet or?
We're down to fifty-five now, aren't we?
If you wanted to handle it, I mean, I imagine the where, where to do it would be here in this exceptions portion of your dimensional standards where you could acknowledge that, we'd have to figure out the best way to do it, but if you wanted to, I think that's on my initial read where it would go.
Okay, I, I, if nobody has any objections to it, I, I would like to make a provision to allow for people to go on top of the roof if they, if the developer designed that sort of facility for it.
That's gonna change a couple, then if it's not, if that's gonna let you exceed your maximum allowable um, height in the district, there's another couple lines you'll have to change. Cause there's a, there's a line somewhere on the height that says, we, we, you know, the planning boy cannot.
Right.
Exactly. It does change a few things.
When Paul showed you that document earlier that I wrote out, I actually did put a little provision further down in the document that addressed that, it's just like another sentence down at the bottom.
I, my concern with that is just, again, keeping this kind of simple and palatable, I, I'm not sure adding that will, will help our cause.
I mean, I, again, I'm not sure if it's something we need to really like point out more than anything, it's just more like, it, it goes up with. Again, if somebody provides an access to the roof and, and then just puts a canopy up, now it's a.
They still have, anything has to be under the height restriction. To get up to that, to get up to that to- top floor, you're gonna need a elevator. So now you're gonna need an elevator room, now you're gonna need an elevator lobby.
Right, well, elev- elevator act, like access hatches and elevators are excluded from creating another floor. But any other.
But, but you're still limited to your top of your, your height restriction. You, you can't have, you couldn't have a you know, a fifty store, uh, fifty-foot building and then have another ten feet with the roof deck in the elevator, you'd be above your height restriction.
Right.
That height restriction, the building inspector looks at that as, you know, uh, as Bible. You cannot, it doesn't matter, nothing can go above that, minus what is, whatever's called out, spires, et cetera. If, unless there's something specifically called out that is allowed to violate that restriction.
Well, that's where I think we would put occupied roof deck. Like features, str- structures associated with an occupied roof deck.
Would it be helpful for us to just look into it?
I, I, I think that would, uh.
If there's gonna be anything like that, then you're gonna have to, and I'm not against it, I'm just thinking it out, you'd have to set it say it so it's set in from the edges also, um, so you're not seeing it, you know, hanging over the side of the building. Yeah, you're, you're in the, you're, you're, you're ten feet in from the edges of the building, you know, you can't really see it from the, the ground.
I'll just make a note here that we'll examine this and we can give you folks some options to look at at your next meeting and decide at that point in time if you deem it appropriate or not, unless Rob, you have any other thoughts on it?
No, well, I'm, I'm following discussion here, it all, it all makes sense to me, how, how we'd wanna, cause I was thinking that same thing, it's like you know, the other side of it is the, if we're, if we're concerned about line of sight in the neighboring properties and stuff, the, the roof deck sounds good in most cases, but is that a one-off where someone might not like it and then the, the step back that Alan said might, might make sense where you set it in and you don't get that, so we can try to see how people
Right.
navigate all that.
Yeah. That's fine.
Yeah, it, it is a commercial district next to a concert area, I can imagine a lot of people would wanna go enjoy the nightlife, sort of.
Review of, uh, the explanatory center if you're close enough?
I've definitely seen a lot of buildings lately that definitely are doing more and more roof decks, so.
Okay, we'll take a look at some language, we'll present you folks some options, um, most likely under the six exceptions section, and we can try and figure out again, how that will make sense and if it's, if you folks deem it appropriate, we can include it.
Other than that, I'm good.
Any other last thoughts on the language? Confirming before we go, removing this parcel, keeping everything else.
Yep.
Um, I'm gonna try and give my two-minute elevator pitch about what's gonna happen next, just so we can all go, I don't know, stare into the night sky or something. Um, we are gonna make these updates, we will present them to you folks, you know, give you the, whether you'd like us at the next meeting or not, just let us know, um, I know Rob will be on PTO, so it'll just be me. Um, I'm pleased to be with you folks, but, um, once we incorporate these edits and you folks feel good about it, there are a couple review processes we could undergo between now and town meeting with some caveats that we, you know, there's kind of no guarantees that we'll get the feedback we need in time or whatnot, and the two review processes I'm alluding to is, one through the attorney general's office. Um, and then one through the executive office of housing in livable communities, both looking at separate things. But also kind of the same thing. Um, the idea, at least in terms of the EO HLC review, is to get prior to town meeting some sort of confirmation that, or, or at least if not confirmation, some feedback that your bylaw will be deemed compliant upon passage. The review period is ninety days. Um, that's where things in terms of timeline kind of get a little weird because things come quick and we might not get the feedback we wanna hear in time, but it's something I would still suggest you folks do just to, you know, check your boxes and then the attorney general's office.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Taylor.
I was just gonna say, the attorney general's office, my understanding is a little bit more of a kind of all encompassing review, but I, I, as, I, I don't think that they can provide any sort of determination on compliance, my understanding is that's not within their purview at this time, yeah.
Correct, but they can get it to us in thirty days is what they told me.
So that would be helpful for any sort of like legal, any other sorts of implications or things we might need to address. Um, and then I suppose there is technically a third avenue of your review that we will pursue, which is we work with a law firm on some of this, you know, three A related work, just to do an initial preliminary review of the bylaw and we would likely do that here as well. Um, we've already kind of, you know, put that on their radar that this might be coming in and we've confirmed with Paul that there shouldn't be any sort of conflicts, they're not working with you folks. Um, and then I suppose, once the review processes are over or at least submitted, um, we move on to engagement and that's where kind of, you know, our colleague Maria, who's not here tonight but whom some of you have met in the past, really comes in and we kind of start to think about what will work for you folks in terms of distributing information information sessions in person, et cetera. Do you have anything to add, Rob?
No, not that makes sense, and yeah, and our, our legal folks, um, like I said, they'll, they'll take a, a pass at this, so we get that peer review. Um, you know, some, some towns have their council look at it, we understand that, that, that's not on the table right now for Dordon, um, but, you know, if, if that's something that, that comes up and becomes viable, you know, we're, we've done that in, in other towns as well, it's, it's never a bad thing to have them look at it, so ba- basically, we're, we, we wanna get other independent reviews of this wherever possible, um, we wanna get the legal side, cause we're pretty good at the planning side, but that's why we have that lawyer um, on retainer to help us with that aspect.
Right.
Oh, but, but would Bobowski bore over it once, since he's looking over everything else anyway?
Uh, he's not scoped for it, but, uh, KP Law will look at this, but not until the warrant is pretty near done, so not as early as we would have liked in this case, but I talked to the town manager's office and they just said now we'll just keep it as we usually do with them.
And we, I mean.
It's just fine.
At the very least, we will definitely lean on your town council, considering that we have special permit clauses now and whatnot to structure that warrant, uh, article appropriately, and you know, we can kind of try and get some feedback on that from our end as well and figure out what that'll look like to ensure that we're getting, again, the best bang for our buck in terms of voting thresholds.
Yep. And, and what that means is we just, the, the goal here is to get the parts that comply with section three A as a simple majority, that's really the, the big picture thing we're seeking out with this, this bylaw and hope to achieve.
If you, in your spare time, would like, I mean, if, again, if I'm being redundant, I apologize, but one example that we've seen in recent times where they have done something like that, structured on the warrant, was in CCONC. Um, that could be an example to, to kind of take a look at and that we're, you know, somewhat familiar with and um, will also be considering as we think about this. Any other thoughts for us, re MBTA overlay, et cetera? Okay, um, we have our mission and we will, you know, communicate with Paul, probably, I think Paul will meet this Friday to discuss a little bit further, some of the edits between now and then that Rob and I incorporate. Um, and we'll kind of get us set up to prepare you folks for the next meeting that you will have about this.
I wanna say thank you guys too for, for, you know, all the great feedback on this, it makes our job a lot more productive and a lot easier. Um, so, we, we really appreciate the debates and, and, and the feedback and just um, the eyes on this, it's been extremely helpful for us, so, so thank you all.
Absolutely.
So what do we say, Paul? We're gonna have them back on the twentieth, is that what we decided?
Sure. I mean, you all wanted to, we have, there are some revisions that we need to bring back.
Okay. Great, well, thank you folks, we appreciate it, like, you know, Rob said, the feedback is always super helpful and makes our job so much easier, so we'll see you folks in two weeks or so and we'll talk about some of those revisions then.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Have a good night, everybody.
A good one.
Paul, you wanted to talk more about the, uh, priority development and preservation.
Only if you all do. But I, I believe it was really Rob that, but if someone else wants to, we just put it on there because we hadn't closed it out last week.
Sounds like the chair's looking for a motion.
Yeah, I, I had some questions about why some parcels in one area weren't included, but I'll just send them to you directly.
Okay.
Okay, and I do have a question for you, Paul, after we adjourn, so don't hang up.
Yeah, okay.
Most enjoy adjourn then.
Second it.
Motion to adjourn in a second, any further discussion? Laura?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
All right, thanks everyone.